You're watching KPTS, Channel 8.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to county commission broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Welcome to the November 18th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today and of course we use this time to let you know about things going on around Sedgwick County. And first, we would let you know commissioners, that Intertrust Bank Arena has a full schedule of events, and especially if you like thunder hockey, because they will be in action on the 20th, 21st, 25th, and 28th. And then of course, we have that great basketball time coming. We have December 12th, the shocker basketball, and December 18th, K-State basketball, all down at our Intertrust Bank Arena. So, check out online and see the other items that are already, and events that are already on their schedule as well, but good times ahead at the Intertrust Bank Arena. We also remind you that Exploration Place has dome shows, those big, nice, active shows in the dome, and they have an event coming up on November 27th and 28th, and it's called Rock the Dome. And you can get one ticket for three shows, so invite you to look into that. And they also have a new dome show available, and it's called The Last Reef: Cities Beneath the Sea. So, something exciting for you, as well as the playtime and lots of things for kids at Exploration Place. Commissioners, on today's agenda, we do have three proclamations, one for National Public Health Week, one for National Farm City Week, and one for National Adoption Month. We also have a presentation of the quarterly Intertrust Bank Arena report. And commissioners, we have a exciting day, it's, well, it's always exciting on Wednesday for us, but one person, it's especially exciting for them, because we're going to celebrate their retirement today, one of our longtime public safety employees. But, before we get to that, and because we don't have a meeting next week before the Thanksgiving holiday, I thought we should have a little quiz, we haven't done a quiz for awhile. And it's very easy, it's fact or fiction. So, you don't have four or five choices, made it simple. I'm looking for you to truly think about the most accurate answer. Got it? It's truly not that hard. Okay, Commissioner Norton, you're up first.
I'm truly honored.
The movement of the turkey inspired a ballroom dance. Fact or fiction?
Well, I've seen a lot of dancing. And I don't remember one called anything but the turkey trot. I'd say it's a fact.
It is a fact, and you are absolutely right, it is the turkey trot, so. Look at this, we have audience participation today. I am liking that.
Those folks have no life at all if they're applauding that.
All right, Commissioner Peter John. Fact or fiction, one of our founding fathers thought the turkey should be the national bird of the United States?
Well, I'm going to be, give you a frank answer.
Okay.
And I won't have to bend too far with Ben Franklin.
Right.
If you don't mind, and I'll say, A, fact.
It is fact, and you are right on.
All right.
Okay, you take a little rest Chairman, you know the drill after a year, always last. All right, Commissioner Howell. Native Americans used cranberries for cooking as well as medicinal purposes.
I've never heard of that, but I'm going to reach out there and say that cranberries are fantastic for lots of good things, I think. My wife loves them, I suppose, some of my family does, so I'm just going to say probably it's probably fact.
It is a fact, and they are, cranberries were used by the Native Americans for, if they had spear injuries, but they also used them for dyes, for war paint and such, so they used that cranberries as those dyes. And the actual, a little fact here, because you know, I'm full of facts and today, but they actually, the pilgrims called them crane berries, because they thought the way that they fell on the tree or bush, that it looked like a crane. So, there you go, that's how we got to cranberries. And they are healthy and good, especially if you get a really good salad or good casserole. All right, Commissioner Unruh.
Okay, make mine easy.
On Thanksgiving Day in 2007, two turkeys earned a trip to Disney World.
Two turkeys, I mean, real turkeys?
Real turkeys. Not parents who took their little kids.
I think I'll just be consistent with my colleagues, I say that's a fact.
That is a fact, and in fact, it was George Bush, President George Bush, as part of the pardoning of the turkeys that went back since, I'm going to guess here, I want to say it was Truman, and maybe even earlier than that, with Lincoln, that they pardoned the turkeys, and these were actually sent to be part of the Thanksgiving Day Parade at Disney World, so, there you go.
And the President took them to Disney.
I don't think he went with them, I think he sent them. And I don't know what happened to him after they said, "We got to go to Disney World," but, all right, Commissioner Ransaw. I always try to make it easy.
The pressure is on.
It's always, it's just, okay. Turkey contains an amino acid that makes you sleepy.
Well, that's very interesting. We've had four commissioners go with fact, and you know me, I'm not one to go against the grain. Five is here.
I think I'm going to make it unanimous and say that's a fact, too.
That is a fact, and they say that it's the tryptophan, but it also, that's present in a number of other food items, but they say that it could also be that huge carbohydrate overload that makes us sleepy. So, to remind you, that after you get a little sleepy, you can head out to the Sedgwick County Zoo, because it will be open, of course, it's always open except for the day that they have Zubilee, so head out to the zoo and take a little walk with your family, and walk off some of that carbs and sleepiness, so. Well, you all did a fabulous factual job this morning getting us ready for the holiday next week, and I appreciate you playing along. And Chairman Ransaw, I think we got a full list of other items that need to be taken care of today.
I think so, thank you very much Kristy. With that, I'll call to order the regular meeting of Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for November 18th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item.
In vocation to be led by Sister Joan Berger, Sisters of St. Joseph, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us bow our heads as we call to mind God's presence within these proceedings this morning. Compassionate and gracious God, let all in attendance see your presence in every face here, especially in those who have some issues to present or opinions to express, whether this comes from one of the commissioners or a person in attendance at this meeting. Help all to hear with ears open and minds attentive, and let each person be respectful of the other when they are speaking, responding to one another in an appropriate manner. May your justice shine on their deeds, your truth in their words, your love in acts of
Right, showtime. It worked! Yeah! All right, you guys made me a guitar, you made me a stage, now all we have to do is check some.
Pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Sister for being here today. Before we go forward, I want to introduce somebody and welcome him to our community. This time, I want to introduce our new county manager, Inspector General Mike Scholes. This is his first meeting with us publicly anyway, and so I want to recognize him and welcome him to our community, and thank him for taking the job as county manager, I know he'll do a fantastic job. Also, he prefers to go by Mike, but I do want to take this time to brag on him a little bit, and give you an idea of what he's done in his past, go through his resume, I think it's important to get that on the record. He is quite accomplished in his career, so I'll go through some of his assignments, he does come, he is married and has five children, is 33 years in the United States Army. His most recent assignment was as Chief of Staff for Kosovo Forces, North Atlantic Treaty Organization in Kosovo, where he was Executive Coordinated Officer of a large multinational headquarters in Kosovo, with a staff drawn from 31 nations. He conducted key leader engagements and coordination with international stakeholders to include the United States Ambassador, European Union NATO Headquarters, and the United Nations. Prior to that, he was the Director of Operations Training Readiness and Exercise Task Force, responsible for Secretary of Defense's only standing operational task force for planning and executing a national level, chemical, biological, radiological, or nuclear response. Prior to that, he was a Brigade Commander of the Federal Emergency Management Agency Region Four Homeland Response Force, which had about 3,500 soldiers and airmen. There, he was responsible to ensure the readiness of the force to operate in a chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear environment. In the past, he's also coordinated and directed responses to several natural disasters, to include the Georgia's historic flooding events, the Haiti earthquake response efforts, and he led a hand-selected command and control team to respond to New Orleans during Hurricane Katrina, and moved the Joint Operations Center from New Orleans Superdome to Camp Gillislong. He also served as a Plans Officer, responsible for military support and performing as a liaison to the United States Secret Service, to the G8 Economic Summit when it was held in Georgia. He's participated in several national domestic response exercises, to include Vigilant Guard, Patriot Shield, which were focused on homeland security. He's also served as a counter-drug coordinator and commander of the Counter-Drug Task Force, working with local, state, and federal agencies. He served as Anti-Terrorism and Force Protection Officer, responsible for physical security assessments and contingency planning, critical infrastructure, and key asset identification and protection in the event of a terrorist attack. He's also served as a maintenance officer, he was a platoon leader doing Operation Desert Shield Storm for combat operations deep into Iraq. He's also served as a battalion commander of a 450-man infantry battalion, preparing units to deploy to Iraq in Operation Iraqi Freedom. Additionally, he has also attended firefighter and law enforcement academies, and is also EMS or EMT qualified. He has a bachelor's degree in business administration, a master's degree in public administration, as well as a master's degree in national security policy. Some of his awards and honors include the Defense Superior Service Medal, Legion of Honor, Bronze Star Medal, Emeritus Service Medals, and many others. So, we are very happy and fortunate to have him with us today, and want to welcome him, he and his wife, into the community. I know they're already getting started, he gets getting to school, and they've got a house, and we are very, very excited, very fortunate to have him here. Mike, thank you very much, and welcome to Wichita and Sedgwick County.
Very happy to be here, thank you.
I bragged on him enough, and made him feel uncomfortable enough, so now we'll move on, but I think it's important to get that out there, he does have a very distinguished career, and we're fortunate to have him. Madam Clerk, next item please.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransaw. Present. Next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of October 14th, 2015, all commissioners were present.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I knew that we approve the meeting, the minutes of the meetings of October 14th and of October 21st, 2015.
Second.
We have question in the second, Madam Clerk, call the vote please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring National Public Health Thank You Day.
Commissioner Norton's going to read that one. I have the honor of reading the following proclamation into the record. Whereas public health organizations around the country are celebrating National Public Health Thank You Day, this 11th annual celebration honors local public health heroes for leading daily efforts to make Sedgwick County healthier. And whereas Paul Gunzelman has been instrumental in making the Wichita community more walking and bicycle friendly, Paul is the Assistant City Engineer for the city of Wichita, has been a true advocate for building an environment to support healthy lifestyles, and has also fostered relationships with community organizations focused on health, such as the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita. And whereas Wesley Medical Center is the first medical center in Wichita to receive the Baby Friendly Hospital Initiative, BFHI designation, that was launched in 1991 by the World Health Organization and the United Nations Children's Fund, to encourage and recognize hospitals and birthing centers that offer an optimal level of care for infant feeding and mother-baby bonding. And whereas Kim Neufeld has spent the last 10 years of her career working on prevention programs in Sedgwick County, including serving as the current Board President of Bike Walk Wichita Incorporated, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the safe, active transportation within Wichita and South Central Kansas. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Richard Ransaw, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioner, does hereby proclaim November 23rd, 2015, as National Public Health Thank You Day in Sedgwick County, and gratefully acknowledge the dedication of these awardees for leading the way to protect and improve the health of Sedgwick County residents. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I would move that we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. And we have Adrian here to receive the proclamation.
Good morning Commissioners and Board of Health, Adrian Vern Lutz, Public Health Department Director. It's my pleasure to accept this year's proclamation for National Public Health Thank You Day. Each year on the Monday before Thanksgiving, leading public health organizations around the country take time to recognize public health professionals who work tirelessly every day to protect us. From the ordinary to the extraordinary, these public health heroes educate our community on the importance of maintaining a healthy lifestyle, preparing for public health emergencies, and keeping our children healthy. Here in Sedgwick County, we are privileged to have many partners who collaborate with us to join resources to improve the health of our community. National Public Health Thank You Day provides us the opportunity to extend our gratitude to a few individuals and organizations who have demonstrated exemplary public health service this past year. Our first is Paul Gunzelman. Paul has been instrumental in making the community more walking and bicycle friendly. Paul is the Assistant City Engineer for the city of Wichita, and a true advocate for building an environment to support healthy lifestyles. His collaborative work style helped to facilitate the city of Wichita's robust efforts to encourage multimodal forms of transportation, and to bring in many community partners. Both the bicycle and pedestrian plans provide the framework for how the community will encourage and support walking and bicycling as viable forms of transportation for the next 10 years. While Paul is seen as an expert in his field, he's always willing to share what he knows in a manner that is easy to understand by those in the community. He is respected by his peers and those with whom he collaborates with. Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you for that. I want to thank the Health and Wellness Coalition for the nomination, Mem and Becky, and also for providing some funding for the design of these, some of the bike paths that we have recently put in. It's been a learning experience for me, going through the design and through construction. We've changed a few things as we went through construction, and we will continue to, I will continue to learn as we do more of these, and finish some of these up, and then do some studies after they are completed. Next spring, we'll do some traffic counts. I also want to thank Scott Wedle with the Metropolitan Area Planning Department, he was instrumental in working with me for these designs, and I drug them out there on occasion for, as we've gone through some of the construction of them, to run some things off, bounce some ideas by them. Lastly, I'd like to thank my wife, I've drug her out there on a couple of weekends, as we went through design, kind of run some things through her, and then after they've been completed, we've actually ran a few of these paths, and I think we've seen people use them, so it's a great deal, I appreciate it, thank you.
Our second is Kim Neufeld. Kim has spent the last 10 years of her career working on prevention programs in Sedgwick County. In her free time, she serves as the Board President of Bike Walk Wichita, Inc., a nonprofit charitable organization that is dedicated to the promotion of safe, active transportation within Wichita and South Central Kansas. Kim recently represented Bike Walk Wichita at the 2015 National Open Streets Summit Conference in Atlanta. Bike Walk Wichita's calendar is packed with events, including but not limited to major events like the Bike Beautiful Fashion Show and Bike Month. Bike Walk Wichita events promote everything from leisurely rides with your family to active commuting to and from work. As a certified cycle instructor and a passionate cyclist, Kim goes above and beyond to make cycling safer and more accessible to all citizens in Wichita.
I just want to say, thank you so much, I'm honored for this recognition, and I do want to brag on Bike Walk Wichita, just briefly, we're a smaller nonprofit organization, a couple thousand supporters of people locally who bike and walk, and we are completely grassroots, we have no staff, so it's volunteer-planned, led, implemented, evaluated, and driven, and so I think that allows us to really meet the needs of the residents, and work with local government entities and stuff, to really make sure we're operating safely. I would also just like to say, I actually started biking and walking when I worked for Sedgwick County, your worksite wellness program actually encouraged me to go purchase my first bike, a big heavy cruiser, which I don't necessarily recommend as your first bike, unless you're looking to just always go roll slow. But really, that is, the worksite wellness program is what encouraged me to go purchase a bike, and start commuting my five miles to the health department, and really transformed my life. I mean, I was pre-diabetic, obese, and I am no longer pre-diabetic without any medical interventions, so it definitely allows me to work in many ways, and to really improve my life, and I appreciate all that you do, and thank you for the award.
Next, and our final, is Wesley Medical Center. Wesley Medical Center received their Baby Friendly designation in June 2015, and became the first medical center in Kansas to receive this standing. Becoming a baby-friendly facility is a comprehensive, detailed, and thorough journey towards excellence in providing evidence-based maternity care, with the goal of achieving optimal infant feeding outcomes and mother-baby bonding. The process compels facilities to examine, challenge, and modify longstanding policies and procedures. It is challenging, creates opportunities to develop high-performance work teams, and builds leadership skills among staff, thus promoting employee pride, enhancing patient satisfaction, and improving health outcomes. Kathy Walker is here from Wesley Medical Center to receive this award.
On behalf of Wesley Medical Center and our many community partners, I would like to thank you for this honor.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you Adrian, and congratulations to all the recipients today, thank you very much. Next item please.
Item D, proclamation declaring National Farm City Week.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamations read into the record. Whereas the prosperity and well-being of this community and area is dependent upon the cooperation of two great elements of our society, farmers and urbanites, and whereas American farms have long been vital to our nation, we must continue supporting this relationship between American farms and families, and work to ensure that farming remains a sustainable way of life for future generations. And whereas the Wichita Downtown Kiwanis Club Farm City Week provides an unparalleled opportunity for farm and city residents to become reacquainted, and also brings recognition to the myriad of contributions our nation's farmers and ranchers make toward furthering the health and well-being of our country. And whereas Doug and Sherry Hess are being honored as a Kiwanis Club of Wichita outstanding farm family in Sedgwick County for 2015, now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ransaw, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 20th through 26th, 2015, as National Farm City Week in Sedgwick County encourages all citizens to remember the contributions and cohesion of farmers and urbanites. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. And we have Ken Springer of the Kiwanis Club of Wichita here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you County Commissioners, enjoyed being here this morning. I loved the quiz ahead of time, being a thankful person and being a farm boy, and if there's a follow-up quiz with that, a show and tell, I want to come back to watch Commissioner Norton do the turkey trot there. But nonetheless, the Kiwanis Club of Wichita for 63 years has recognized a farm family in Sedgwick County and this relationship, and the values that they bring to our community, and also providing the economical stimulus to agricultural production, and then being leaders in their own community. We're honored this year to recognize Doug and Sherry Hess. Doug arrived into Sedgwick County in the mid-1950s, his father moved out here from around Yates Center, Kansas, there wasn't enough of a farming size there to support all of the families that had come up within that family, and so they left grandfather behind, and they came out here to Sedgwick County. Arriving here, trying to get into farming was too much of a challenge, so Doug's father actually began doing trucking business, and eventually then founded the Hess Trucking Company, which was owned for a number of years in the family. Doug and his brother Edward had begun purchasing farm ground. Today, Doug operates all that land, plus additional land for about 1,300 acres, located just west of Valley Center. And he's been innovative with his farming techniques, a real proponent of stewardship, conservation practices, and just this last few years have began to incorporate what's known as no-till farming to conserve the soil, and then also begin utilizing cover crops, which has a number of benefits on enhancing the soil till, maintaining the nutrients on the field, and keeping those from getting the field, and keeping those from getting into our water supply system. And so we're honored today, we'll be recognizing the day at our noon luncheon, and we appreciate the County Commissioner's support and, and with the proclamation, as you've done for a number of years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk? Well, actually, we have, I think we have an off, no, no, we have one more. Next item, please.
Item E, Proclamation declaring National Adoption Month.
Commissioner Peter John's going to read this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the state of Kansas recognizes the importance of giving children permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption, and whereas today there are approximately 350 Kansas children who are waiting to be adopted, which is a small portion of more than 100,000 children who need matched with a loving adoptive family, and whereas some children who wait the longest for an adoptive family are those who have suffered abuse and/or neglect and may have medical, emotional, and/or developmental needs, and whereas brothers and sisters who are separated in the foster care system yearn to be adopted by the same family, and whereas many older youth living in foster care feel they may be too old to be adopted, yet they want a sense of belonging that adoptive parents can provide, and whereas these children need families who can provide unconditional love no matter what and help the children reach their full potential, and whereas adoption brings unique opportunities to forever transform a child's life and enrich the life of the adoptive parent or family that welcomes them. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ransaw, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 2015 as National Adoption Month in Sedgwick County in the hopes that the people of this great state will open their hearts and homes to Kansas kids in the foster care system. And I'll move this resolution, Mr. Chairman.
I second that.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
And we have Justin Thaw here today.
Well, good morning. I'm here on behalf of St. Francis Community Services. We work in the community with hundreds of children and families in the foster care system as well as adoption. And this month annually, we celebrate National Adoption Month, and with that, we generally, on the Saturday prior to Thanksgiving, we have a celebration at National, or at Exploration Place to complete several adoptions. And so this Saturday, we will be finalizing 42 adoptions at the Exploration Place of children in this community and throughout the state of Kansas. And so, and here to accept the proclamation on behalf of all those children and families is Heather and Ron Mel Gilbert, a family who is adopting this Saturday two of our children, Sanaa and Samaya, who they have fostered for the last several years. And so I would like to introduce them and let them say a few words.
We just want to say that we are truly blessed. When you're told you can't have kids, but you know you have a loving heart, it's time to open up your home. And there are several kids out there that still need families to support them, provide safety and security, and we're just blessed that we were able to do that. And we're blessed that for the last three years and three days, we've had these beautiful children with us, and we finally get a chapter closed in their life so they know that they have that sense of security, a place to sleep at night, some food to eat, and they have the most loving hearts. And many times, they do come with mental issues because of neglect, because of sexual abuse, and things like that, but you can work past that, and it's just an honor for us to be able to open our homes and be able to provide that security for these two beautiful girls and let them know that they no longer have to be afraid and that they know that they have a roof over their head and food on their table every single night.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, Gilbert, I really appreciate you coming down today, and, and I was honored to be able to read this resolution as an adoptive parent myself. We spoke a little bit earlier about our new county manager, Mike Scholes, who also is an adoptive parent too, so we have a number of folks here in Sedgwick County who've been there, who are in the adoptive parent process, and I hope the manager won't mind me throwing that in since the, since the chairman, chairman threw that, so many other items about his resume into his background. I wanted to, wanted to add that today and also add that I've, I've been honored and privileged to be able to attend this event in the past, and I know a number of the county judges. I'm not sure who on the judicial side will be attending this Saturday to help with the finalization, but I suspect there will be more than a few, and I want to give a shout out to them, and, and this is a wonderful event, and I urge the public, anyone who hears our voices, to take, take on your words, Mrs. Gilbert, because there are a lot of kids out there and, and they all, I think every child deserves a loving family and two-parent household with a mother and father. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Norton?
Well, thank you very much for being here today. Your actions close out the loop for what we do in our community to protect our children and our vulnerable. You know, we, we've worked real hard recently on a child advocacy center. We work with the Department of Children and Families consistently. We honor what the Kansas Children's Service League does for our children. St. Francis Community Services kind of fill in that last gap to try to find permanent residents and families, and all of this is so important to the system that we try to create in our community to protect and love and value the children that are going to be the future of our community. So thank you for taking on your piece of it and, and being proud to do that and taking some kids that otherwise would be in foster care for many, many years and not have a loving family and a place to put their head on a fresh pillow every night, and we really honor you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here and congratulations. Now, I think we have a need for an off-again item. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the staff meeting yesterday, I talked about bringing two additional resolutions in light of recent events onto the, onto the agenda for today's meeting, and I've worked with the counselor's office to draft language. I don't know that we, I've got a formal copy of the revised draft in front of me, but, but either resolution concerning the atrocities that have been committed involving civil aviation with the Russian aircraft and as well as the events, the multiple, the assault in Paris, France last Friday. So I've got two additional resolutions I'd like to bring up at this time, Mr. Chairman, and we'll make a motion to do so.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
You want to go ahead and introduce the first one?
Yes, I will. I'm going to preface it just a little bit. In October of 2002, my wife and I began our adoption journey, and we were flying into Sharon Metzovo International Airport in Moscow at a time where Islamic Chechen terrorists had taken over a theater, were holding approximately 800 people hostage, of whom approximately 150 ended up getting killed. Neither my wife nor myself had ever been east of France at that time. I'd never been east of Maine, and, and to be literally flying into a city where was literally under siege was more than a little bit intimidating at the time. In light of the events of the last week, I would point out the fact that there are, I think 224 is the most recent number of men, women, and children who were killed during the bombing of the Metrojet liner. So in that context, I'm going to have this resolution regarding terrorist attacks against Russia. Whereas Sedgwick County is the second most populous county in the state of Kansas with over half a million citizens and residents, and whereas Sedgwick County is aware of the alliance that the United States and Russia enjoyed during the defeat of the threat of fascism during World War II from the Axis Powers of Germany and Italy, whereas Sedgwick County as a governmental body is dedicated to preserving and protecting the precious freedoms enshrined in the Constitution of the United States and the amendments thereto, whereas Sedgwick County government is also dedicated to preserving and protecting the precious freedoms enshrined in the Constitution and State of Kansas and the amendments thereto, whereas freedom-loving and civilized people in our country, in our county, and in our country, and around the world were appalled at the latest aviation atrocity being committed by Islamic savages that resulted in the death of over 200 Russian citizens in the November Metrojet bombing over Egypt, and whereas Islamic terrorists have slaughtered Russian citizens in the Moscow Theater attack of 2002 and the assault on the school in Beslan a few years later that killed 331 people. And whereas the leader, leadership of the federal government is unable or unwilling or is too ignorant to call Islamic terrorism by what it is, Islamic terrorism, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Sedgwick County, Kansas, that Sedgwick County expresses our deepest condolences to the people of Russia and in particular all the citizens who lost loved ones, friends, or neighbors in the city of bombing. Sedgwick County extends these condolences to all of the families of the victims who were slaughtered in this despicable and vicious act. Sedgwick County stands with the people of Russia in protecting civil aviation against this barbarian horde. Sedgwick County is working to protect the people of this country and this state and is dedicated to making sure that the evil events created by Islamic illegal combatants will not occur here. And, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution, and I'm going to say for the record, this and the following resolution, I'm the primary author of, and so I am, for all of my colleagues who do vote with me on this, I am, I am in the forefront on this and want that on the record too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I second that.
We have a motion of second. Commissioner Norton?
Well, I'm, I'm probably not going to vote for this proclamation. I have some issues with some of the language. When we talk about this worldview and that we call our own leadership at the national level ignorant, I have a little bit of a problem with that. The issue here is that we mourn for the families and the communities that were dealt these atrocities. I certainly do that. My heart goes out to the world as we, that we live in. It is incredible to me that we watched man's inhumanity to man, for whatever reason. So trust me, I understand most of the tenets of this proclamation. People that know me know I have a loving heart for all humanity, and that doesn't change today, but some of the language in here is a little inflammatory towards the leadership of our own United States, which to me is not at issue here. It's random acts of violence around the world that none of us condone, but this goes a little too far for me. It's a sad day for the world, it's a sad day for the individuals that are suffered. It's sad that our beliefs and our ideologies and the, and the word "love" cannot come together. So whereas there's most of the, the language in this that I would support, there are parts of it that I just cannot because I think it, it goes a little too far, it's inflammatory, and in my mind, today is a time to put your head down, think about those that have lost their lives, pray for our world, and, and not making it worse than it needs to be. So with all due respect to my colleagues that may vote for it, I cannot go that far in accepting all the language in this proclamation, and I will not. And I'm sure there are people that will disagree with me. It is not about death and inhumanity to man, it is about some of the language that I think it goes a little too far. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
And do you have your second proclamation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a second proclamation entitled A Resolution Regarding the Terrorist Attacks in Paris. Whereas Sedgwick County is the second most populous county in the state of Kansas with over half a million citizens and residents, and whereas Sedgwick County is aware of the long alliance that the United States and France have enjoyed going back to the American Revolution, and whereas Sedgwick County as a governmental body is dedicated to preserving and protecting the precious freedoms enshrined in the Constitution of the United States and the amendments thereto, and whereas Sedgwick County government is also dedicated to preserving and protecting the precious freedoms enshrined in the Constitution and State of Kansas and the amendments thereto, and whereas freedom-loving and civilized people in our country, in our county, in our country, and around the world were appalled at the latest atrocities being committed by Islamic savages in the streets of Paris on November 13th, 2015, and whereas the leadership of the federal government is unable or unwilling or is too ignorant to call Islamic terrorism by what it is, Islamic terrorism, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Sedgwick County, Kansas, that Sedgwick County expresses our deepest condolences to the people of France and in particular the citizens of Paris. Sedgwick County extends these condolences to all of the families of the victims, including the United States citizens who were slaughtered in this despicable and vicious act. Sedgwick County stands with the people of France in support of their principles, liberté, égalité, fraternité, against this barbarian horde of illegal combatants. Sedgwick County is working to protect the people of, of this country and this state and is dedicated to making sure that the evil events created by Islamic illegal combatants will not occur here. I move this resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Commissioner Norton?
Well, the, the language in this proclamation is, is almost exactly the same as the last one. I, I think I've said what my feelings are. I would add to it that I believe that we, we want to be, America to be safe, we want the world to be safe. In fact, my family right now is supporting a son-in-law that's in Qatar, helping protect America's future and America's safety abroad. So I'm very supportive of, of many, many actions that we take as, as a government to try to protect our, our nation. But some of the language in here, once again, goes a little too far. There's so much in this country, right or wrong, that we don't know about what is happening in the world, and sometimes making broad statements about what we do or do not know from the information that we get in so many different media sources, some verified and some not, does not make sense to me. Once again, I do mourn the families in Russia, the families in France, the families around the world that have suffered because of ideologies and beliefs and hatred and anger, but I, I cannot support the, the full language of this resolution or proclamation today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
Is that all, Commissioner? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Retirements. Item F, Presentation of Retirement Clock to Gregory Harland.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Eileen McNichol, your Director of Human Resources. We have the privilege this morning to honor and thank Greg Harland, Fire Division Chief from Fire District Number One, for his 28 years of service to our community, serving with dedication, commitment, and pride. Chief Harland will be retiring December 1st. Congratulations on achieving the employment milestone of your retirement.
All right, I get to talk a little bit about his career here. First of all, Greg first started in fire service in 1986 in Ark City, Kansas. Very good, I have a brother who's in the fire department down there. However, he almost went to truck driving tools, oh, instead of being a fire marshal later on, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, I had my first meeting with the Commissioners and, and rethought maybe what I was doing, I, I should maybe go to truck driving school and stuff.
Well, we're glad you changed your mind. But he started with Sedgwick County in 1987, promoted to lieutenant in 1999, promoted to captain in 2002. He became a state-certified fire investigator in 2003, and then he became International Association of Arson Investigators, CFI, in 2012. He's moved to fire prevention in 2011 and promoted to division chief in 2014. He was a real go-getter, wasn't he? Weren't you? Yeah. He's also been involved in a lot of incidents here in the county that you all know about. He was on duty at Station 34 when He was on duty at Station 34 when the Andover tornado struck Clearwater and moved to Haysville, then towards Andover. He participated in the distraction of baby Jesse in Mulvane, and he was first on the scene for Sedgwick County Fire Department. He participated in the De Bruus grain elevator explosion, as well as the Haysville tornado in 1999. He was also original member of the Sedgwick County Fire Technical Rescue Team and was a VFW Fifth District Award in 1999. He's very, had a very long and distinguished career with Sedgwick County. Now, he gets to spend some time with his self-employment jobs and catch up on all the honeydews. With that.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I'm very proud to be here today. It's been a long career that I'm very proud of. I'm proud to work for Sedgwick County. You have one of the finest departments in the country, and I say that not because I'm biased, because I've, I've been traveling to different venues, to classes. Everybody knows who Sedgwick County Fire is. We're very well-respected throughout the country, not just the state. It's your responsibility to keep it that way, because you have the purse strings. So, keep that in mind, and thank you very much.
Well, Greg, we go back a long way. In fact, some of those things that were enumerated, the De Bruus grain, the two Haysville tornadoes I was intimately involved with. I just recently saw a picture on Facebook of five retired Station 34 guys, Glenn Randall and some others. I guess we'll have to Photoshop you into that picture now.
I'll have to grow the beard first, so.
I think they're all writing "America" on their bikes. Are you going to do that, too?
I just might. You never know.
Okay. Well, we're proud of you, and, and one of the reasons that Sedgwick County Fire is so well-known and respected around the, the nation is because of guys like you that have put in the time, that have gone for certifications, that have learned their craft at the highest level, and we honor you for that. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement and come back to see us every once in a while. We'll be gentle if you come to the meetings.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm smiling a little more now than I was the first time.
Congratulations, Greg, and thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Citizen inquiries. Item G, request to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding the use of e-cigarettes on Sedgwick County property.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Lewis, 2551 Wilderness Court, Wichita, Kansas.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Lewis. I'm a family physician in Wichita. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak to you today. I am here to address the topic of allowing electronic cigarettes to be used in all county buildings. As a local family physician, the issue of encouraging e-cigarette use concerns me for many reasons. At my clinic, I have specific protocols in place to address tobacco use with each of my patients. With the current, I'm sorry, with the recent increase in cigarette use, it has become necessary to also address these e-sig products. Put simply, our lungs are designed to breathe air. Our lungs are designed to take in clean, fresh air. Adding anything beyond that causes health problems, whether it happens immediately or later in life. Studies have already shown that people using e-cigarettes are more prone to lung infections such as bronchitis and pneumonia. I have seen some of these issues in my practice already. These added illnesses contribute to, contribute to the healthcare cost of their place of employment, in this case, Sedgwick County, which ultimately places the burden directly on our taxpayers. I am not only concerned for users of vaping devices, I am concerned about people around users being exposed to harmful substances. Secondhand emissions have also been found to contain many of the same chemicals that are inhaled by users, such as nicotine, heavy metals, and cancer-causing agents. People in close proximity to e-cigarette users will have direct contact with these chemicals without their choice. The county buildings are meant for public use. They belong to the public. This situation is not the same as before the Clean Air Act was being implemented, where people could choose whether or not to visit a restaurant that allowed smoking. People don't have a choice of whether or not to pay their car tags or property taxes. I am also concerned about the renormalizing of smoking in the eyes of children. Children who witness smoking are themselves more likely to start. The same is true for e-cigarettes. Already, national surveys of our youth have shown youth from middle school and high school age children has tripled from just 2013 to 2014. These are kids who had never even tried smoking, so they definitely aren't using these devices to help them quit. These kids are developing a nicotine habit at an early age that will most likely lead them to tobacco use as an adult. Do we really want to encourage a new generation of smokers who visit our public buildings? It is much easier to prevent tobacco use. On average, it takes seven to nine quit attempts for a person to give up using tobacco. E-cigarettes are not the answer to this problem. A 2014 study of Kansas e-cigarette users found that the vast majority also smoke cigarettes. They obviously do not help people break the nicotine addiction, which leads users to continue smoking. The American Academy of Family Physicians recently concluded that the current evidence is insufficient to recommend electronic nicotine delivery systems for tobacco cessation in adults, including pregnant women. The AAFP recommends we direct our patients who smoke tobacco to other FDA-approved cessation interventions with established effectiveness and safety. I have had many patients try the e-cigarettes, and I think I've only had my, maybe one be successful. Recent studies, in fact, as recent as 2014, have shown that there is serum, which is the blood cotinine. Cotinine is a byproduct of tobacco smoke, in non-smokers sitting in a chamber, this was a study chamber, with similar for cigarette smoke and e-cigarette aerosol exposures. So, there is definite evidence that there is nicotine in the vapor. Any thoughts of increased claims of productivity by employees not leaving their desks will be dramatically offset by many fellow employees leaving their work areas to avoid the toxic vapor? And what about the increased doctor visits, especially for asthmatics being exposed? And I can't imagine being pregnant and being forced to intake anyone's toxic vapor. Please, let us not go backwards with this issue. Let's prevent the re-normalization of public tobacco use. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis, for being here. Sorry you had to wait so long. Normally, it doesn't take quite so long to get through this. Commissioner Howell, I think.
Yes, well, first of all, Dr. Lewis, thank you for being here today and for making some comments for us to consider. I appreciate that, and, and I will be making a motion that we receive and file her comments. I'd like to make some comments as well. You made a, a comment early in your remarks that were encouraging their use, and I would like to disagree with that. I, I don't think that's the, the intent of, of the discussion that we've been having at all. In fact, I've been very, very clear that I'm not a proponent of e-cigarettes, okay? And I, I don't believe that, that's never been my goal. Let's be clear that the, our, our current position with our current policy was written before cigarettes, e-cigarettes even existed. Trying to apply a policy that's not very clear, and how, and, and what does that mean in terms of e-cigarettes? We have some choices before us today, whether we should do anything at all, which is certainly an option, excuse me, we can do nothing, which is an option. We could clarify exactly what this policy means with our employees and our customers. We could move, like seven other cities have done in, in Kansas so far, to ban their use in government, in government places. So, we have some options available to us, and I, I think that many of the doctors have made the assumption that they know where this is headed, and I, I think that that's premature. Yesterday, we had a very thorough presentation by both sides of the issue, and many questions were, were asked, and there were many ideas that were, were given to the council or to the commission here for us to consider. And I think that the policy, should it change, is going to be based on education and based on, on science and data, rather than, I don't think we, we know right now exactly where this is headed, but I don't think it's fair for anybody to assume that they know exactly what our, our motives are or where our goals are, because I don't think we've stated those. I, again, I, I have never smoked anything, and I'm not a proponent of, of smoking anything. I'd encourage people not to, to start another bad habit, and so that's not something I would encourage in any way. But I, I have recognized that something's going on in our community that I think ought to be recognized by the medical establishment, and they have not given it much consideration. I know that the, the people at the, at the, the tops of these organizations, the Cancer Society, the Lung Association, and the Heart Association, as well as the American Medical, American Medical Academy, I believe it's, is that, what's it called? I forget the word.
The AMA?
AMA, okay, thank you. They, of course, have not gone, got on board with this, and they continue to make comments about these in terms of they're not, they're not regulated, they're not FDA-approved, we don't know what's in them, and they may be harmful. They, they've never been, never have been proven to be not harmful to others. Okay, so, those are the, the comments I keep hearing from those groups, but what I've seen has gone on, and there are now 2.4 million users of e-cigarettes. And first of all, they're really not cigarettes at all. They don't use anything related, related to tobacco. The only thing they have in them, if you look at what's being sold predominantly amongst the shops that provide, provide these things or sell these things, there are four main ingredients, and those are propylene glycol, vegetable glycerin, flavor, and nicotine. And I understand that the doctors routinely prescribe nicotine actually as, as a way to help people get off of tobacco cigarettes. And so, nicotine itself is not, not the issue. I would say that any, anything anybody can use to get off tobacco cigarettes is a, is a step in the right direction. And what happened in Sweden, I guess, more than a decade ago, was that the entire country actually started encouraging their, their citizens to use alternate forms of nicotine delivery, and the entire country now is reaping the benefits of, of that encouragement. And I guess my position is, knowing that there's 2.4 million users of e-cigarettes, and that correlates very nicely with the reduction, the sudden reduction in cigarette use, something's going on in our community. The reality is, I, I would call these nicotine delivery systems that are, are providing an opportunity for people who are addicted to cigarettes and using all of the tools in the toolbox that the medical establishment promotes, things like nicotine patches and Shantix, which has some side effects and does have some harms, including suicide. We saw yesterday, one of the sta, one of the stats given yesterday was there was about 500 people each year that are committing suicide that are on Shantix. And now, whether that's correlation or causation, we don't know, but I'm very concerned about that. We have about 480, 480,000 Americans each year are dying from cigarette use, and 5.4 million people in the, in the entire world dying from cigarette use each year. And trying to, to, to consider what's going on in our community right now. People are naturally, through the free market, making choices to go towards, to something that's not regulated, that we don't understand the harms, okay? I, I understand your concerns about those issues. But I think that, knowing those four ingredients are the main things that are in these things, and they, they have been studied for nine years now, I'm actually very excited and, and happy for people who make a choice to get off of actual cigarettes. And if they're using e-cigarettes or some other method to get off actual cigarettes, I'm happy for them. The reality is that e-cigarettes are about 10 times more effective in moving people away from actual tobacco cigarettes. And so, something's going on in our community. It should be recognized by the medical establishment, and it's not been, and unfortunately, even Dr. Richter yesterday, she, she conceded that only about one-third of her customers are successful in getting off of smoking, given all of the tools in the toolbox, and she's a very, very high expert in this, in this subject. The data I've looked at is somewhere between 6% to 9% successful nationwide. So, given all the tools in the toolbox, people trying to quit smoking are 6% to 9% successful, successful, which means there's 90, about 90% failure rate. And with e-cigarettes, the, the success rate's more like 60% to 70%. In fact, I talked to some of the folks who are using these things. I said, "How many of you are former smokers?" And almost all of them raised their hands. The, the reality is, the audience that's using these cigarettes are nearly, almost exclusively, former smokers, and some of them are dual users, you're correct about that. But I think, again, anytime they don't smoke a tobacco cigarette is a step in the right direction. And so, I think that the, the community needs to, needs to be educated. We need to recognize that there is potential to actually save a lot of human suffering and death, and for us to treat these things like they're actual cigarettes is missing an opportunity. There's a game changer that's gone on right before our very eyes that's potentially saving tremendous amounts of human suffering and death, and it's time for the community to understand this issue and to get on board at some level and say, "We would encourage people to get off tobacco cigarettes any way they can do it." And this is certainly one of the tools that should be in the toolbox. I have got testimonials in my office I could show people, of people who are addicted to tobacco cigarettes for decades, who've tried numerous times to get off cigarettes, were unable, unable to do that, and they tell me, through their own testimonials, that they were able to, within a short time, a week or so, been able to transition from tobacco cigarettes to e-cigarettes, and they, they can breathe better, they can sleep better, they have more energy, and they're reaping the benefits of getting off of tobacco. I am very, very concerned about people, and I think that I, I don't stand any, any financial gain by this issue. I think everybody else, the tobacco companies, to be honest, the vaping, the vaping retailer outlets obviously have a stand, a stand to win or lose in this issue, and certainly the pharmaceutical companies do, as well as the doctors do. I am not biased because of financial gain. I have no, I don't care about this issue regards to benefiting any, any particular entity. I am, I am neutral, because I have no personal gain attached to it. But I am willing to say that the, the seven cities that take, have taken this position and done so, I think, under political pressure. And the United Kingdom has actually led the world in regards to trying to find ways to get people off of cigarettes, and they've recognized e-cigarettes as, as a tool that should be in the toolbox.
Okay, am I allowed to speak?
I think you are allowed to speak at the end here. I just have to finish my comments, if you don't mind. Again, I, I am, I'm, I think that understanding human suffering and death, and knowing that the, the mission of these organizations, as well as the doctors, the Hippocratic Oath that you have taken to retire, reduce human suffering and death, it is time to get past the politics of this and to recognize there's a game changer in the community, that people, by their own testimonies, have said, "They finally found the answer. It's 10 times more successful than everything else you can offer them. The things you're offering them also have harms associated with them." I think it's time for us to get past the politics of it, and let's, let's encourage people to do what's right now. Having said all of that, I'm not saying we should necessarily allow these things at, without restrictions in the, in the workplace, or in our, in our, in our customer, in our customer locations. I've never said that. We need to study this thing, and let's be very, very careful. The policy has not been, has not been changed yet. We have some things to consider. I'm still developing my ideas on how we can do this in a way that would actually really help people and, and still be sensitive to the people who don't want to be around the secondhand vaping smoke. I think there is a way to get there. And so, I, I, I think what we ought to do, in my opinion, is to find a way to not demonize these things, let's try to help people, let's encourage them to get off actual cigarettes, let's make a policy that actually, it considers both sides of this issue, and is very careful to, to, to not, to not miss this opportunity to actually help people. I'll stop talking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. My concern, and again, I appreciate your thoughts, Mr. Howell, my concern is that you base your facts on testimonials. I'm basing my facts on medical studies, and there's more and more coming out monthly, and I, I have emailed each of you gentlemen some of the conversations that I've had with Mr. Howell. I haven't heard back from anybody, so I don't know if my, my stuff went to junk mail, I don't know, but I'll provide that again. And again, we have everything backed up by studies, and the big concern is you're taking away someone's choice. This is a county building. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want my patients, I don't want to be in there. I mean, these are based on facts. The most recent studies show there is, there's cotinine in the vape. We've got a study that shows that. That's not bogus. That's not a testimonial. That's a study based on science. And so, again, that's a nicotine byproduct. And so, I don't know what Mr. Howell is basing his facts on, but I'd like to see his studies, and I'd like to share my studies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a motion yet?
I made a motion to receive and file.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item H, resolution appointing George Dean to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Item H is a resolution appointing the Honorable George Dean to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging. He would be Commissioner Norton's appointment. It is necessary to appoint Mr. Dean to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Theron Black, who needed to step down. And the paperwork all appears to be in order to me, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Commissioner Norton?
Well, I'm appointing George Dean, who has been in the legislature, is very active on the South Side, has advocated for seniors and for many years has been part of the silver legislature. I'm sad that Theron Black, who has been my appointee, has had to step down. He's been very, very active in senior issues for many, many years. He's been a great steward of that appointment, but because of his health and his age and his mobility, he's having to step down. I'd like to applaud him for his service today, but I'm, I'm very honored to make the motion to appoint George Dean to the Council on Aging. to appoint George Dean to the Council on Aging.
Second. Madam Court, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye. Is Mr. Dean here to be sworn in?
No.
Okay. We'll get him sworn in at another time. Next item, please.
Item I, approve the resignation of Charlie Stevens from the Cedric County Public Building Commission.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a recent conversation with Mr. Stevens, and we decided that it would work out best that we postpone this item until our next meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity at this time to thank Mr. Stevens for his service on this board and continuing service for at least the next two weeks until I think our meeting on December 2nd. It's, there's a couple of issues from make the timing on this, such that by mutual agreement, we've talked about postponing this until the first meeting in December, so I'm going to make a motion that we postpone it until that time.
Second. We have a motion to, and a second to postpone until our next meeting. Madam Court, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item J, quarterly interest bank arena report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hold, Assistant County Manager. This is the third quarter interest bank arena report. We'll get it on the screen. This is our year-to-date status report, which is the end of the third quarter, and then we'll give you some year-over-year 2015 numbers as well. Again, the goal, we just want to keep before so we don't lose sight where we've come from, and as you know, the arena is owned by Cedric County, operated by SMG. This is the plan that was, the timeline and the plan that was used to develop the project. Today, we'll be talking about arena management, quarterly reports, the arena event parking commitments that we have funding-wise, and the annual sales tax, or the arena sales tax revenues and where we are with the uses of those and any upcoming events. Again, just background information, we'll move right into the ticket sales, community fairs, and financial summary reports. Looking at the third quarter 2015 ticket sales, we had third quarter, seven events, 11 performances, 39,880 in attendance, 36,977 tickets sold for $1,556,415 in gross ticket sales for an average cost per ticket sold, $42.09. The average attendance per performance in the third quarter was 3,625 for those 11 performances. Year-to-date, September 2015, we've had 262,193 in attendance, 239,573, $7,609,567 in gross ticket sales, $31.76 in the average ticket cost. You see an asterisk by each of those, that's because the two events during this time period were not, the ticket sales were not handled through select-a-seeds. So there's really more attendance, more tickets sold, but they were off-system, if you will, they were handled by the promoters and not select-a-seat. The average attendance per performance, 3,800. Year-to-date, 2015, September 2015, over year-to-date, September 2014, we see there were 18 additional performances, 64,920 more in attendance, 56,522 more tickets sold, $2,205,801 more in gross ticket sales, and the average ticket cost per ticket sold was $2.24 more year-to-date 2015 versus 2014. Third quarter community fairs report, $673,287 arena paid in employee benefits and wages, net employee benefits and wages. Employment, full-time employees range from 41 to 42, part-time employees range from 326 to 350. Those are pretty consistent numbers from quarter to quarter. September 2015 report, year-to-date, employment or the net employee wages and benefits, $2,028,31. Full-time employees range from 37 to 42, part-time employees range from 326 to 374. Year-over-year, September 2015, compared to September 2014, we had $127,357 more in wages and benefits paid. The employees fluctuated, as you see there on the, on the report. Third quarter 2015, there were 47 community groups volunteering in concession stands. Again, some of these groups are repeats, so those not, or individual, some of these are counted multiple times, so it's not individual, an individual number. Mount paid the community groups for volunteering in concession stands during the third quarter was $38,673. Spending with Cedric County and Kansas companies during the third quarter was $514,350.78. Sales tax paid during the third quarter by the arena, 2015, $190,138.69. There were four arena presentations and our tours, and seven local events or activities. Looking at those same numbers, year-to-date, 2015, we have 172 community groups that were volunteering in concession stands, they were paid a total of $252,711. Spending with Cedric County and our Kansas companies during the first nine months of this year was $2,506,48.29. Sales tax paid during the first nine months of this year, $806,540.83. 26 arena tours, presentations, 26 local events and activities. Year-over-year, 2015, September 2015, September 2014, we had 33 more groups, paid an additional Spending with Kansas companies was up over $700,000. Sales tax paid, $224,528, $224,528.91. Sales tax paid more this nine months compared to last year. Arena tours, 13 more tours, one more local event or activity. You see some of the community service projects, most of those are ticket donations, just scroll through those, you see there is a food and beverage donation in addition to ticket donations that the arena provides for various groups in the community, and then the marquee usage there on this, this page. Getting into the financial summary, excuse me, third quarter financial summary, going down to the total numbers, the number of performances, there were 19, 14 events. Going clear over to the right-hand side on total, on that total line, net event income was $661,956. Other operating income, $458,977 for $1,120,933. Total gross billing income, expenses, $1,221.2, and so there was a loss for the third quarter of $100,069. Looking at the same information, year-to-date, September, the total performances, 96, events, 72. Again, the net event income over in the last column, total, $2,740,493. Total other operating income, $1,150,232. For gross billing income, total of $3,890,725. Expenses, $3,796,764. Year-to-date, September through the first nine months, net billing income is positive number, $93,961. Excuse me. Looking at those numbers, year-to, year-over-year, more, 18 performances, more this year than last, 10 more events, going to the, to the far-right column, an additional $782,917 this year over last year. I'll just scroll through these numbers, you can see they speak for themselves. We get, get to the bottom line there, and the difference this year over last year, we're $339,521, better this year net billing income than we were nine months 2014. Event parking, we have the agreement with the city on four parking areas, lots A, B, C, and D, and if we have a commitment up to a certain dollar amount, if those parking lots don't prove profitable, and we see that through the third quarter, the net there is So again, this year, I think through the next quarter, we won't have any problems having those as a positive number at the end of the year. Certainly, looking at the year-to-date number, $16,102, we won't have any issues. Arena sales tax reserves, those of authorized uses listed here, major repairs, capital equipment for the arena. This is that commitment on the parking lots, up to $225,000 annually for the city to provide parking operations and maintenance on lots A, B, C, and D, and parking operations and maintenance of the second St. Francis parking lot that the county owns. The ONM reserve, operating reserve as of, operating maintenance reserve is of September 30th, 2015, stands at $12,859,691 and some change. You see there the intake, the revenue intake during third quarter was $295,000, those are the naming rights payments, and you see the expenditures during that, during the third quarter, $26,095, $95 and some change. Again, the ONM reserve this year over last year is down $453,71.59. That's after having paid out the capital improvements for the arena. And you can see for the rest of this year, and even into next year, there are pretty full schedules of events at the arena. That concludes the report, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Misseners, or questions for Ron? Mr. Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron, I wanted to get a better understanding, I think it was slide 14. I'll take that back, sorry. Slide 9. We talked about, you talked a little bit earlier about how there was some different handling because the money went through a select-a-seat. I was curious in terms of the quarterly report, did a payment come in from the promoters in lieu of what would normally be paid, and would that show up like in slide 9? Or is it somewhere else, or how is that handled?
The payment would come in through, and it wouldn't show up here on slide 9, it would show up over on the operate, on the event income. So they would have paid for the use of the arena, their ticket sales would have been taken into consideration as a part of that facility rental.
Because I, slide 7, talked about gross, or ticket sales, and I was kind of teaching that, treating that as what the column gross ticket sales, but those two events were basically, there were no dollars reported there, so I was trying to understand where the, I'm pleased with the increased amount of revenue. I was hoping that there would be a more positive difference on the bottom line with that increase in revenue, but I wasn't sure if we were counting everything coming in or how that was being handled because of the way those two events were being treated.
If you look at slide 22, then it would be, those numbers that you're talking about from those events would be reported in net direct event income, either, or net food and beverage, other net income, and certainly would end up in that net event income number. Just didn't come through as ticket sales.
So basically, looking at the net event income line, we lost a little over $100,000 for the third quarter.
For the third quarter.
Financial summary.
But nine months, we're $93,961 to the good, and compared that to last year, we're what, $400, $300, $39,521 better at the end of nine months this year than we were last year.
Well, my bottom line that I'm looking at is slide 33, and looking at the fact that our ONM reserves have continued to drop, and are not, a little over $450,000 lower this year than at this time last year. So even though we've, we've still got not quite $13 million in ONM reserves, that number's down from, I believe it was 15.5 million that we started with when the facility opened, and of course, if that continues to shrink at some point, that becomes a, that's going to be a challenge for a future commission when, when that reserve fund gets depleted.
We've taken that, looked at the capital improvements, capital improvements planned for the arena for the life of it over 20 years, excuse me, and Mr. Cronus has run those numbers, and that, that reserve with the inflows and outflows each year and what it stands at now should certainly be sufficient going past the life of the arena more than 20 years.
Well, I, actually, for the facility like that, I would hope it would have a much longer lifespan, but, but, and you're absolutely right, in terms of slide 32, for the third quarter, you know, we're, there's a lot more revenue on that side of it for the fund as opposed to expenditure, but, but that hasn't, usually it's been the other way around, and so that's a concern for me going forward, and obviously, we need to be in a position where we can have a, the facility operating in a way that hopefully we can, we'll have stronger financials in the future, at least as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would just mention that even though we talk about a lifespan of 20 years, how we maintain it and up, do the upkeep, well certainly, we expect that lifespan to be longer than the 20 years, but the standard lifespan for facilities like this, about 20 years.
But, you know, I think we're depreciating it like over 40 years, aren't we?
I don't, I kept, I don't recall, and.
You know, that's more of a Chris Cronus question, or.
I can get that number for you, yes.
But, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curiously, on the, on slide 28, the revenue for these lots, A, B, C, and D, is that taken into account the $225,000 we pay the city?
We don't pay the city anything.
Okay, we don't.
We, the county contributed funding at the very beginning to expand and or upgrade those lots, and then the agreement with the city is that they will, they will make them available exclusively for the arena when they're needed. They will manage them, they will operate them, they will take, maintain them. And should the net income become a negative, the county then would pay up to $225,000 to the city. To date, which we're in the sixth year of the arena operations, or in the fifth year of the arena operations, we have not had any expenditures toward those parking lots.
Okay, so let me just be clear then, on slide 29, that $16,000 of revenue, is that going to the city then?
That's, that's the city, yes.
The city's revenue, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Curiously, on slide 33, what I remember, again, I'm trying to go back in my memory to the last couple of reports I've seen here, but it seems to me we've had a consistent negative difference on slide 33. Is that, is that true?
We would, that is true, and we would because we're, we're beginning now to expend anywhere from 500 to 1,000 to over, not this year, I think last year we had like a $700,000 capital improvement number. This year, another 700,000, we're going to be 800 and some thousand. year, another seven hundred thousand, we're gonna be eight hundred and some thousand twenty-sixteen. And so, with those capital improvement numbers, uh, you, you can see that we are receiving, of course, uh, income from naming rights that help offset those numbers, so that the total, uh, uh, decrease every year is not the full amount of the capital improvement because we have other income to help offset that.
Okay, and you're, you're basically saying then that, if I understand correctly, that this, it's expected this, the expenditures might increase as we go forward because the building's aging?
That's correct, and, and for instance, one of the things, uh, we have built in or we're looking at for twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, uh, we're expecting the, the, uh, N C double-A basketball regional, uh, first and second round basketball tournament here in twenty eighteen, and we're looking at, uh, the ins, access and, and egress from the arena, especially on that north side, because we're getting more and more people coming from the old town area, congestion over there, so we're looking at how we might put in some additional stairs or escalators on that side, so in seventeen, we're projecting like a, almost a three million dollar capital, if we do that, almost a three million dollar capital expenditure.
Do we have any plan what happens when this number crosses, basically gets to zero? What are we gonna do down the road, obviously, if it continues this trend, we're gonna hit zero at some point?
The not, the, the timeframe for that hitting zero right now is like twenty-three or twenty-four years out in the, out in the future.
Okay, so we don't have a plan right now, but that's something we'll, we'll figure out later on.
That's something that whoever, uh, is in your seat and in this chair after about twenty years can, can begin to think about. I would also say, again, that's the life of the arena, and we will have fully met the obligations and commitments that we had under the sales tax, uh, campaign.
I would just say, one final comment before we go on here, and I would make a motion to receive and file this report as well, but, um, but as we go on, I just want to make one comment, and I continue to get complaints from folks who say, I would like to go to the arena, or sometimes I do go to the arena and I feel unsafe, and I, I have asked, I guess, for S M G to consider a way for us to put gun lockers at the arena, I think there are some folks that are not willing to go there because it's late at night, they, when they leave the arena, they have to walk sometimes many blocks back to their car, maybe it's not one of these lots that's nearby, but it's in, you know, they have to walk, you know, over to, uh, Lawrence Dumont Stadium, for example, after, after a show at the arena, and I just, I know there are some folks that are very concerned about that, we've been very aggressive in trying to, uh, ensure people have the right to, to defend themselves with Second Amendment rights in our government buildings, and this one stands out as an exception, I know it's privately operated, which is, which is why they have the signs on the doors, but having said that, I think there ought to be some, some way for us to provide an opportunity for people not to leave guns in their car, which by the way, didn't get broken into, um, again, I think that's, that's a whole nother, a whole nother problem, but also giving them away for them to, to actually get to the arena and not feel unsafe between their car and the arena, allowing them the right to, to defend themselves, and so I think we need to, to dust off that issue, and let's, uh, develop a plan that we can see some gun lockers put at the arena so people can have that opportunity to defend themselves.
I've had more than one conversation with, uh, A.J. Beleski, who's the, uh, and by the way, A.J.'s out of town today, or he would have been here, uh, about talking to his counterparts, S M G facilities around the country, and about what if and how we might be able to do that. The only other thing I would, I would add, in talking to, uh, the police department, the safest place in Wichita is in a six or seven block, uh, surrounding the arena during an event night.
That, that conflicts with some data that I saw earlier, I thought, I asked for some crime stats about, uh, some things going on around the arena, and I, what I remember was, is that there was, um,
Most of the, most of the-
Car break-ins and things like that that are going on around the arena.
Yeah, I, I, again, I didn't say it was no, no activity, I said the safest, uh, when you look at the overall crime, uh, statistics, especially, uh, in the core area of the city.
And that, and even if, even if that's true, I still think people have the right to defend themselves, and I, and they, they may feel safer knowing that they have an option with them, so I would still like to see this issue, um, I guess, addressed by S M G, and again, I understand that they have adequate security measures, and so we're not talking about people bringing these devices, these, these, uh, you know, these defense tools into the arena, we're talking about giving them a place to, to store them during the, during the show, so they should hopefully have no impact on their policies of what happens inside the arena. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ronru?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron, I'm, I'm pleased to hear you report that, uh, according to the, uh, opinion of our law enforcement, uh, folks, that we have a, a secure, safe place for our citizens to enjoy, um, our entertainment venue, I have not heard people tell me that they feel unsafe around there, or have heard, uh, I have not heard reports of any sort of violence or burglary or vandalism to their vehicles. Most people, I think, um, that attend the arena are, are having a good time, there's usually large groups of people, and they're within, um, oh, three to five blocks of the arena and are enjoying themselves, so I haven't heard, I just want to try to not give the impression that there's, uh, any danger in going to our Interzbank Arena and, and enjoying the activities that are, that are put on there. My other comment is, as I've commented before at these report times, I'm just really pleased that, uh, the operation of the Interzbank Arena has a really positive effect on community groups and individuals. On slide fifteen, it shows that, um, we had a hundred and seventy-two community groups involved, I think that's a positive thing, um, Interzbank Arena paid out two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to those groups, um, spending with Sedgwick County companies, um, in order to supply whatever they need, food and drinks, whatever, two and a half million dollars so far this year, and they paid eight hundred thousand dollars in sales taxes, I think those are significant numbers that we need to be aware of to measure, uh, the impact and the value of this particular entertainment and cultural event center in our community. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Where are we at? Madam Clark, do we have a motion in a second?
Uh, just a motion.
Second.
All right, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransow?
Aye.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I might, as you know, uh, Garth Brooks announced two shows, they sold out now six shows, December third, uh, Thursday night, December the third, will be one show, about thirteen thousand people, uh, December fourth, uh, one show, about thirteen thousand people, December the fifth, Saturday, there will be two shows, thirteen thousand people each show, Sunday, uh, two shows, thirteen thousand people each show. I, the point I want to make is that we've been actively working, uh, we pulled back together the original, uh, parking, uh, planning team, and we've been actively working, and in the next couple of three days, you'll be hearing announcements, the, uh, uh, community will be hearing announcements about what that parking plan is, so that people will know how and where to park, except, especially on Saturday night and Sunday night, the second round of shows, uh, on those two nights, so, thank you very much.
Commissioner Peter John?
Ron, very much appreciate the, the, the report, I think the, uh, those six concerts are very exciting, and I, and it will be a wonderful event, we had a huge successful, incredibly successful series of concerts with Garth Brooks, I hate to say it almost twenty years ago, but I do definitely remember that, I think maybe eighteen years ago, but it's really exciting, he's coming back, and I hope, uh, we can be as successful this time as we were back then.
He had five shows then with an arena that held about ten thousand people, uh, he has six shows now with an arena that holds for those shows about thirteen thousand people, so we're counting very successfully.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item K, island annexation request for City of Clearwater pursuant to City of Clearwater Resolution Number thirteen dash two thousand and fifteen.
Good morning, Commissioners, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, uh, I'm in front of you today on an island annexation by the City of Clearwater, uh, referring to the map that's up on the screen, uh, this is in regard to the property that's in red, uh, you'll notice that there, uh, if in that map you can see several other parcels that are, or portions of the City of Clearwater that are in blue, um, and as you can see, there are also several other properties around this property that have been annexed by the City of Clearwater through island annexation. Uh, for the sake of clarity, an island annexation is when annex land does not adjoin, uh, the city's boundaries, uh, state statute lays out some, uh, specific requirements under which an island annexation can occur, uh, the first is the land is required to be located in the same county as the city, in this case it is, uh, second, the owners of the property must petition or consent to the annexation, in this case, the property owner's petitioned for the annexation, and third, the Board of County Commissioners, by a two-thirds vote, uh, would need to find the annexation will not hinder and prevent growth and development of the area or that of any other city within Sedgwick County, and that's a finding you all are tasked with today, uh, in making, uh, that determination. The City of Clearwater approved the annexation of this property, uh, by unanimous vote of its city council, uh, my understanding, the property owner's petitioned for this annexation so they can connect the City of Clearwater's water, uh, supply, and it's also, uh, come to my attention that the reason that the, these annexations for this subdivision, as you can see, there are several of them that have occurred here, is each time a new home is built in that subdivision, they end up actually petitioning to annex, uh, because there is not a good water supply for that subdivision, uh, so this is, like I said, there have been several other properties here that have already annexed, and this is, uh, the latest in that. Uh, the Metropolitan Area Planning Department completed the staff review of this annexation, and they recommended the Board of County Commissioners find the proposed island annexation would not hinder the proper, proper growth and development of the area, nor any other city in Sedgwick County, a copy of that review is included in the backup materials. There, the City of Clearwater does have their city administrator here today, and I believe he would be present to answer any questions you all may have about services that would be provided, uh, to this particular property, and, uh, it also is worth noting that a city is prohibited by statute from unilaterally annexing a property off of a property that's already been annexed, uh, through an island annexation. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have, uh, if you don't have any additional questions, and I'd yield to any, anyone else who may wish to speak on this matter.
Commissioner Peter John?
I do have a, do have some questions, but perhaps the Clearwater, um, administrator might be a better person to answer them.
Thank you.
Because this is not the first time that we've had the, uh, annexation, that these types of annexations come up, and I just wanted to get kind of an overview in terms of what the future plan is from the Clearwater perspective for, for this annexation, and how you go about providing services, since it looks like there is a good deal of distance between, uh, this one property that's up for discussion today, but nearby properties, some of which are already in Clearwater, and how this is going to work in the future.
Certainly, uh, Justin Given, City Administrator for the City of Clearwater, um, in two thousand and five, I believe, uh, the city ran a, uh, water main up to this area, um, to provide water service, the, uh, domestic water supply table wouldn't support residential, uh, structures, they, some of the houses, uh, actually, uh, can have sprinkler systems, but, um, a majority of them can't even get sprinkler systems right now, and so when the city did that, uh, basically they made arrangements with the developers of those two, uh, prop developments to, uh, require petitions for annexation when they came into the city, um, basically, since that time, we've arranged, uh, for, uh, road maintenance with Neniscott Township, uh, we have an ongoing agreement with them that they provide, uh, road maintenance, um, on a per, per parcel basis, basically, and then, uh, our police officers routinely patrol the area, um, I believe in the last numbers that we got, um, in two thousand and fifteen so far, we've responded to four calls in, uh, the Prairie Grass Edition, which is the subject of today's annexation, um, total, over the last several years, uh, probably about twenty to thirty calls in, in those areas, but we do routinely patrol that area, those, uh, residents are, uh, able to take advantage of our Vacation Watch form, obviously, uh, Clearwater Fire and EMS responds in that area. Additionally, um, in discussing this with our, uh, police department, we also responded to, uh, since two thousand and thirteen, two hundred and three calls just in the, uh, unincorporated area as well, so, you know, it's, it's, we're going out, outside of our jurisdiction to assist with Sedgwick County and, and those areas as well, anyway, but we do routinely go through there and do patrols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to confirm, is there an agreement, uh, for someone to do road maintenance when you have a mixture of city and unincorporated homes next, you know, side by side, who's taking care of the road in front of the homes?
Yes, we have a, an agreement with Neniscott Township.
Okay, so it's not a problem.
To provide that, no.
What about a nine-one-one, should someone call nine-one-one that's in one of the, uh, city homes versus the non-city homes, is there any difference in how that's handled?
There are no non-city homes.
Okay, well-
That, the, 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 the white parcels-
Yes.
-that you see within the subdevelopment are not developed yet.
Vacant properties.
Vacant properties, yeah, and then once, once those properties become, which hopefully, uh, probably in, in next month or in Ja, January, I'll be back in front of you again, we'll, we'll have another house, um, so as the, the arrangement that the previous developer and city council and everyone that was involved basically made, as, as these houses develop, they request water service, we provide the water service, and then they petition for annexation.
Okay, well, that sounds like a good answer, thank you for that, for clarifying that, that's all my questions.
Commissioner Norton?
I'll make the motion that we, uh, find that all the findings that have come before us today are appropriate, and that we authorize this to be called.
Second. Before, before we do that, I was intending to see if there's anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this issue. I didn't think there was, but I want to give the opportunity, um, any other questions for Commissioners? Seeing that, Madam Clark, do you have anything?
I guess I, I would just chime in, uh, it may be, Commissioner Norton, you made the motion, just to clarify the, and I, just to make sure it's sufficient, uh, the motion, I think, that would need to be made under statute is that to make a finding that the annexation will not hinder or prevent proper growth and development of the area, or that of any other incorporated city located within Sedgwick County, uh, that would be, I, I guess, a-
That would be the appropriate finding language that I would like to put into my motion.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, properly, that's been properly worded?
Correct.
Okay. Madam Clark, call the vote.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransow?
Aye.
Thanks for being here today.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, and hope to see you again on this.
Absolutely, thanks. Next item, please.
Item L, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on November twelfth, two thousand and fifteen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on November twelfth results in two items for your consideration this morning. Item number one is the North Yard Fabric Membrane Salt Storage Structure for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Greystone Construction Company in the amount of three hundred forty-two thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and six cents. And item number two is the agreement with the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas for Calm Care, recommendation is to execute the agreement with the Association of Community Mental Health Centers of Kansas for an estimated five-year cost of two hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred twenty dollars and fourteen cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of both items.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, uh, the lease cost for this building seems a little bit high, do we have options, should we want to not continue this for, let's say, six months, say we go six months, we want to change our mind, do we have options of getting out of that contract?
It's software.
Oh, it's a software, I apologize, I was expecting one about leasing, uh, the building, never mind, I apologize for the, my confusion, and my only, my only other question was, are, was the, uh, for the, uh, North Yard Fabric Membrane Salt Storage Structure, was that a budgeted item, do you know, do we budget for that?
David Spears. David Spears, Director of Public Works, uh, yes, sir, we did budget for that, and it was in the capital improvement program.
Very good, thank you, that's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peter John?
Uh, yes, I was ju, just curious, in terms of, uh, five years is a long time, I was just curious in terms of the, um, and it's, since this is, uh, um, I wanted to get a better understanding in terms of the duration, especially in terms of, uh, exactly what, uh, how, how this, uh, agreement works out between the, between us and them. So is, it's a one-year agreement with annual options to renew, or is it for five years or some other time, help me out on the timeframe?
It's a five-year, I believe it's a five-year agreement, I'm looking to see if anyone from, uh, Calm Care is present. I'm looking to see if anyone from Calm Care is present. Here's Marilyn.
Marilyn Cook with Calm Care. Yes, that is a five-year cost.
Okay, because I was just, I mean, the software changes and locking us in for that period of time makes me a little bit nervous, and anything you can do to make me less nervous, I'd sure appreciate, Marilyn.
Well, I'm not sure how I would do that, but if I could, I would. This is a company that has been doing analytics for a number of years. And they're going to help us sort the members in our health home in a more productive way. So, you know, if the software changed, we obviously could get out of the agreement.
Okay. Well, I'm just, you know, when we've got a sole-source contract, and they were the only ones who responded to the bid, I'm just, you know, in the tech area, I know that happens, happens frankly more often than I'd like, but I just wanted to try and understand, because for five years, I mean, that's, in the tech world, I don't know how many versions of Windows we'll go through between now and five years from now.
To my knowledge, these are the only folks that do this kind of analytics product currently.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe, let me clarify. So is this automatically for five years, or is it for a one-year, then it renews automatically? Or do we have any grounds to terminate that contract, you know, like most contracts?
Yeah, there would be grounds to terminate it. The actual contract is between our association and this CMT Pro Act. And our association is paying this for the seven centers that are engaging in this product. But we have, this agreement is an agreement with our association, Community Mental Health Centers, so we would certainly have an out if we wanted to get out of the product. And in fact, we're trying it for six months to see if it's something that is beneficial to us.
So how much notice do we have to give them if we decide we don't want-
I didn't, I left a copy of the contract in the other room, but I'll get back to you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anything, anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterjohn.
Aye.
Chairman Ransow.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Thomas. Next, or Joe? Thanks, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Yes, Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you adopt the Consent Agenda before you, items M through AM.
Commissioner Norton?
I'm willing to make that motion with the exception of items R and S. I'd like to pull them off. I'm not warm to renegotiating the terms of the expiration placed in Sedgwick County contract, but I'd make the motion on all other items besides R and S.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterjohn.
Aye.
Chairman Ransow.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we adopt items R and S.
Second.
Staff has worked diligently with these two entities to work out these contracts and issues, and so I'll be supportive. Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you just made the comment that I was going to make, and that is that we are in the midst of negotiations, and this has kind of been an ongoing discussion, and I think it's something that we need to do in order to, for both sides to be contractually protected, I guess is the right word.
Right. Commissioner Peterjohn?
I find myself in agreement with both Commissioner Enruh and Commissioner Ransow on this issue, and we'll be supportive. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterjohn.
Aye.
Chairman Ransow.
Aye.
Now we move to legislative issues, which we have none, or we do? Other?
I know, I'd just like to make a comment about the Consent Agenda.
Yes.
There was many items on here disposing of records, and anytime we dispose of that many records, sometimes it's good to announce to the public that we have a policy that we follow stringently. We have a records-keeping department that really takes a lot of time and effort to make sure that we're following all the rules and regulations and laws of the states of Kansas as far as destruction of public records. So I think we need to just let that be known. That's all I have.
And keep me honest, Mr. Manager, we have no fire district meeting, nor do we have a need for executive session. So we'll move to the other portion of our meeting. Commissioners, do you have anything for other? Mr. Peterjohn?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to provide a public warning for citizens, and it's going to be politically incorrect, so some folks may be uncomfortable with it. But I took an oath of office when I came here. I take it very seriously to preserve, protect, to defend the Constitution of this country, as well as the state of Kansas, from all enemies, foreign and domestic. Talked about it in terms of practical terms, trying to keep us safe at as reasonable a cost as possible. And in light of the, I've heard some folks say, well, we've got an enemy at the gates. In light of the most recent Muslim atrocities committed against Russian civilian aircraft and the people in Paris, including at least one American citizen who lost their life, we have a, in my opinion, there is a clear and present danger in our own country. Now, I've heard some folks say, well, not all Muslims are terrorists. True, but irrelevant. Not all Russians were communists. Not all Germans were Nazis. We have plenty of incidents, and I'm going to mention one that I've, I wanted to say, speak out on this, but I've held my counsel, held my breath for quite a while. We had an American Muslim here in Wichita who tried to blow up the airport. Fortunately, he failed. Didn't say anything at the time when he was arrested, didn't say anything during his court proceedings, was appalled that our politically correct folks in the community treated this like a one-day car accident on Kellogg. I mean, it was here today, gone tomorrow. And didn't raise the underlying question of, what would have happened if he'd gotten lucky? What if he'd been able to succeed? No national news media on that. Of course, there's been other incidents in Midwest, too. We had an incident up in northern Kansas recently involving Fort Riley. We actually had a fatality down in Oklahoma City where a woman was killed and beheaded by another, by another American Muslim. Unfortunately, there was a good American, a patriot, with a concealed carry permit who ended that Muslim attack before others, there were others who were injured, but before they could be killed, too. Recently, the Director of the Federal Bureau of Investigation has said and warned that there are terrorist investigations going on in all 50 states. And the Islamic State has basically said, hey, sweetest blood is American blood. We now, at least politically correct, are, they're now calling it by its proper name, dash, which is the Islamic term for the Islamic State. But what isn't being covered, there is an ongoing ethnic cleansing and genocide against Christians, against Yazidi, and other non-Muslim minorities throughout the Middle East and North Africa. This is outrage. It's a crime against humanity. Can't be covered by the armed news media, because frankly, they'd be just as happy to chop off the news media's head as any other American. So it largely gets ignored. Well, evil should not be ignored. It cannot be ignored. There was a very evil man in the 20th century by the name of Trotsky, Leon Trotsky. He was a Bolshevik. And there's a quote attributed to him, and unfortunately, is all too true. The Trotsky quote is, "You might not be interested in war, but war might be interested in you." And looking at the sad, vicious, and millions of people who were killed in the 20th century, I regret that this quote from, attributed to Trotsky, may be correct. And I add that I think reality can be ignored, but cannot be denied. Now, I want to assure the public that there are many excellent county employees who are working very hard to keep our communities safe, and keep this county safe, and there are a lot of excellent state employees and state leadership who are doing the same. And I would add that I also believe there are many federal employees at the working level who are trying to do this. But at the most senior level, we have a president who is more critical of his Republican opponents in this country, at least by his rhetoric, than the Islamic butchers of Paris. And we've got President and Secretary of State who can't utter the words Islamic terrorist, Muslim jihadist, or even illegal combatants, or any other accurate description of those people who crave the opportunity to kill, kill us, kill Americans. When an Islamic regime threatens death to America, and then our president turns around to give them $150 billion as part of his agreement, I look back and I say, well, this is a 21st-century form of the tribute that America tried to give to the Barbary Pirates in the days shortly after the end of the Revolution in 1783. Now, elected officials, I'm an elected official, president's elected official, but, you know, unlike the president, I'm just a county commissioner. There's roughly 350 of us in the state of Kansas. And the president's elected by an entire nation, highest office in the land, and unlike the president, my father was a Christian, not a Muslim, did not have a Muslim stepfather, or educated in Muslim school overseas. So, and I never hung around with the scum of the 1960s, people like Bill Ayers, and Bernadine Dohrn, and Rashid Khalidi, and others, other political extremists. But I want the public to help understand the existential threat this country faces. And we've got refugees, and to basically, the Islamic State said, we're going to infiltrate people into this country. And we now have open borders, we've got plenty of criminals, I mean, thousands have been released, and thousands more. The only, the only area where I see is, and I heard a news report today, literally, where our immigration laws are being enforced, is against Iraqi Christians, small community managed to get into California, and the federal government's trying to expel them. Now, I've been told, in my study of Islam, that the Islamic State folks say, any picture or depiction of Mohammed is beyond the pale. Well, I've got some Mohammed pictures I'd like to show as part of my comments today. And let's begin with the first Mohammed picture that I want to show. And I hope it shows up on the screen here. This is Mohammed Atta. He was one of the ringleaders who helped kill almost 3,000 of our citizens. And think about the butchery. We talk about September 11th, but people were faced with the hideous choice, being burned alive and killed by smoke inhalation, or jumping off from the hundredth and some story of the, one of the World Trade Center buildings. Almost 3,000 died. We had the brave people from United Flight 93 who basically came out, and they'd been disarmed, no concealed carry on aircraft, can't even take a pocket knife. But they prevented and saved a major building in Washington, whether it was the Capitol, whether it was the White House, or any other building. And that's my first Mohammed picture. Let's get to the second Mohammed picture. Shortly after the September 11th assault, we had John Allen Mohammed, who was very successful, he and his, as a murderer and assassin, and managed to kill a number of people in the Washington DC area, and literally put that community, the fear factor, because of his success at butchery. That's another Mohammed. And I hope our president, Secretary of State, might study this Mohammed, too. Now, let's go on to the next Mohammed, because this Mohammed hated our freedom of First Amendment and free expression, and he, he tried to behead, almost succeeded, but he did fatally stab a Dutch movie director who produced a movie that he didn't like. Well, let's, go on to the next Mohammed. Here's another American Mohammed, Hesem Mohammed Hediyyat, who was involved in killing people at the Israeli Al Al Airport Counter at Los Angeles Airport. There seems to be an aviation connection here, and for the Air Capitol, we ignore this at our, we take a big risk if we ignore this. Let's go on to the next Mohammed. Now, this Nordin Mohammed Top was involved in the, several dozen people were killed, but it didn't get as much attention here because Bali is in Indonesia. Interestingly enough, a country that's predominantly Muslim, but Bali is one part of Indonesia that's predominantly not Muslim, and set off some bombs there and killed a lot of folks. And let's go on to another Mohammed. Now, this is one who managed to get by Israeli security, Asif Mohammed Hanif, a suicide bomber who blew himself up and tried to injure as many people as he could in Tel Aviv, Israel. Now, we've got another Mohammed, I believe. And this Ali Mohammed was particularly successful in his butchery, in the sense that he was involved in killing a couple of hundred, mostly Kenyan and Tanzanian citizens, but he also killed a number of Americans, bombing at the US embassies. This Mohammed, another Mohammed. Let's go on to the next Mohammed. Now, this Mohammed was more focused on rapes in Sydney, Australia, and was part of a gang of, Mohammed Skaaf was part of a gang of rapists in Sydney. And let's get on to the, the last picture we have. This is one of three Mohamads. Now, the names vary, but this is the only picture we had, who was involved in a plot to bomb Ottawa, Canada, and assassinate the Prime Minister of that country. Now, I don't have all the, there are other Mohammed pictures. In fact, during this meeting, in fact, news reports, there's apparently been some arrests, and there were more Mohamads being arrested. And I would mention that Sheikh Khalid Mohammed is probably the most, he was the mastermind of the 9/11 attacks. He's been in our custody, and we don't treat illegal combatants like we used to, like George Washington, FDR, and General Eisenhower did. But, but he's not included in this picture. And I'll admit, there are other non-Mohamads who were involved in some outrageous terrorist, Islamic terrorist attacks on us. I first saw a news report that the Sarnaya Brothers were behind the Boston Marathon attack and bombings. They had both applied for, and I think one of them had been granted US citizenship, according to a news report that I saw, and then went on to commit their hideous acts as refugees into our country. And we want to bring in more refugees who we can't properly vet. The enemy is not at our gates. The Islamist threat in this country is inside our gates. And someone said, well, these are random acts. Well, sorry, these are not random acts. I want to assure the public out there that the local and state government, I believe, is doing everything we can to keep us safe. But the enemy is cowardly, and they prefer to attack women, children, old men. They're too cowardly to take on our military. But for our citizens out there, I want to give you a close with a public warning. I'm an Eagle Scout. Been a long time from the grain in my beard, it's a long time since I've been involved in scouting, but Boy Scout motto, and I urge this for all the public, be prepared. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your efforts in the resolutions today, and letting us know, bringing this information to light, and reminding us of what's going on. For some, it's difficult for them to listen to this information. In fact, we had one Commissioner that didn't want to hear it, so he left. That's disappointing. We stick our head in sand, it's not going to help things, so. I think there's a quote by somebody that says that evil will succeed if good people do nothing. With that, Mr. Manager, do we have anything else to come before the commission?
No, Chairman.
Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.